Welcome, everybody. Hi, my name is Christopher Ply. I'm an associate professor in the Department of Public Administration here at West Virginia University. And I had the opportunity to facilitate this meeting this evening, and it's a very important meeting. I'm a political scientist by training, so when I heard the phrase "town hall," and that's what this is, I immediately thought back to, "What is a town hall?" Well, a town hall is what? It's an opportunity to identify issues. It's an opportunity to share ideas. It's an opportunity to participate, to hear from stakeholders, to hear from officials, to think about challenges, to think about solutions. You know, when we talk about underage drinking, we talk about high-risk drinking, we're often thinking about what? The problems. Of course we are. And we all could come together in a town hall and we could talk about the problems. And we certainly want to situate those problems, whether they are at a university level, whether they are in our community, in our state, far beyond our borders of our state and our community, part of our society and culture. We want to situate that problem, but we also want to think about ideas and solutions. And so this town hall, if you will, is an opportunity for folks to come together, to talk about these issues, but also to think about some solutions and start to chart a path forward so that we can work together here in our community to address this issue, but also to create knowledge so that others across our country and beyond can benefit from the conversations that we're having. You know, there's a big phrase these days, whether you're in business, or in economics, or political science, or sociology, or just out there in the world, it's called "the co-creation of knowledge." That's a big buzzword these days. Well, that's just another word for a town hall meeting, in the sense that people come together, they share ideas, and we come out of it with more knowledge, and knowledge that we can put to use. You know, this whole idea of coming together is so important that, you know, this initiative generated here at West Virginia University, but it complements things that are happening across our country. You know, tonight's town hall is actually supported in part by the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, SAMSHA. I like acronyms. Do y'all? I need affirmations. Yes, yeah, okay. So SAMSHA has supported this, you know, and that's out of the Department of Health and Human Services. And if you think about it, this issue is a big-time issue. I just happened to be at the National Institutes of Health yesterday for some meetings, and their magazine, Medline Plus, which just came out, one of the features in this magazine from the National Institutes of Health, features the concerns and problems of underage drinking. So this is definitely an issue that's on the map, whether it's here in our community, whether it's situated in the university community across the country, or is identified as a underlying major public health issue in our country. And so we're really fortunate tonight to have with us a group of experts and stakeholders who could provide a lot of perspective. And so I want to take just a moment to introduce them. And then, um, we're going, I'll outline sort of where we're gonna go. So this is where I pick up my clipboard. And I introduce our respective folks. First, we have Evan McIntyre. Evan? All right. Evan is, um, you're our representative for the Interfraternity Council, correct? Okay. Well, actually, rather than me doing all this introduction, tell us just a little bit about yourself.
Hello, everybody. My name is Evan McIntyre. I am in Sigma Nu, and I'm also the president of the Interfraternity Council and a sophomore industrial engineering major at West Virginia University. Hello.
Thanks, Evan. Mayor Celine.
Hello, my name is Jenny Celine. I'm the mayor of Morgantown, and I'm looking forward to participating in a cleanup that Evan is organizing, uh, next week on Tuesday. And last year when we did this, we had some lovely conversation and got real tired working together. That's the type of solution that I'm interested in. Thank you.
Dr. Whiteman.
Good afternoon. My name is Chuck Whiteman. I'm associate professor in the Department of Emergency Medicine in the School of Medicine here. I am board certified in emergency medicine, and I've spent the better part of the last 20 years working on the night shift at Ruby Memorial Emergency Department, where I see this problem, um, every weekend night, and the weekend starts on Wednesday. And, um, I'm glad to be here.
Mr. Robinson.
I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Gigg Robinson. I'm the spokesman for the West Virginia Alcohol Beverage Control Administration. Been there about 12 years. We have a very robust relationship with WVU and the city of Morgantown. It's very nice to see a lot of people that we've worked together on this issue, so more work to be done.
We appreciate you being here. Ms. Dobbs?
Yeah, hi. Um, my name's Helen Stubbs, and I'm with a company called EverFi. I serve as the vice president for higher education there, and essentially what I do, I'll describe later, but, um, we, we essentially support campuses in their alcohol prevention efforts. Um, and I have worked in this field for probably about 15 years or so, helping to support campuses to do this kind of work. In fact, no gig for many years ago. Um, so, yeah, happy to be here. Thanks.
Chief Roberts.
Well, I'm Bob Roberts. I'm the chief of police at the university. I'm kind of representing all the law enforcement units here, Chief Preston, Sheriff's Department, Fire Department. Uh, I've been at this about 29 years. It's been something that's been with us for those 29 years. It was 21 years when it was 29 years ago, and now it's 18, but it's the same problem.
Right. And I think that's important, because I think we want to situate this not only in terms of what's happening now, but what's happened over time. Now, this is a town hall meeting, and the audience, I would hope, to be very involved in all this. So let me ask a couple of questions. How many of you are from the Morgantown community? Raise your hands. Okay. How are, how many of you, who are you from beyond, who's here from beyond the Morgantown community? All right. Where are y'all from? Bluefield, West Virginia? Where else? Charleston? Okay, great. Any other visitors? Yes. You're from New Jersey? Great. Well, welcome to all of you. How many of you all are parents? Okay? How many of you all are students? How many of you all are administrators or faculty at West Virginia University? How many of you all are elected officials? How many of you are, uh...
Elected official?
Go ahead. How many? How about local or state government representatives? Okay? Notice that when we raise our hands, we often raise our hands more than once, don't we? And that's the idea behind community, is that we play many different roles. Many of us are parents. Most of us live here. Many of us have jobs that have responsibilities to touch upon this. So we come at this as citizens, as community members, and as professionals. And what we're going to do this evening, in the time that we have, and this is just the beginning of the conversation, is we want to first talk about some of the evidence and some of the numbers that are out there. Then we want to talk about some of the impacts. Then we want to talk about some of the paths that we might pursue to address this problem, tapping into best practices and the experiences that we have. Okay? So, I've worked with our panelists, and by the way, I also had a whole lot of help from an organizing committee, where I start naming the names, we'll be done, okay? But this has really been a collaborative effort. And so what I've asked is, I've asked, um, a couple of folks to really help us start to situate this. And so I'm gonna go back to my notes here. I want to be well organized. And what I'd like to do is, I'd like to start off by asking Helen Stubbs to kind of give us a big picture. And by the way, Helen has spent the entire day here, right? Sharing knowledge, working with different stakeholders, whether it's student, uh, student affairs, or whether it's been with the students and with health science folks. You've really spent the day sharing information and giving perspective. And so what Helen can do is that she can help us situate these issues, not only in the Morgantown and the West Virginia University context, but in the broader context. So Helen, you have the challenge of giving us the big picture in a very short period of time.
Sure, I'll do my best.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Helen.
So, I just want to first say, I really appreciate the opportunity to be here and be speaking with you all, and really to engage with the broader Morgantown and WVU community. I've actually been coming to visit WVU on an annual basis now for four years running, and this is the first opportunity that I've had to really engage with folks from, from the broader Morgantown community and sort of a broad swath of folks across WVU. So, so thank you for, for allowing me this opportunity. Just want to provide also a little bit of context here about the work that I do with my team and what my, my company does to essentially help to support campuses. And really, essentially what it is about is not just looking at educating students or applying a certain program to kind of work your way out of this issue, but really looking sort of at the broader context to, to really look across not only what are the programs in place and the policies, but how much institutional support is there for prevention. And essentially what we do is, is kind of do a full diagnostic on the campuses that we work with to say, you know, "How do you compare, when we benchmark you against other institutions, what do you look like?" We give campuses grades on these things, and really a roadmap for success, an action plan with recommendations, so we can speak to that a little bit later. But one thing that I, I do want to be clear about in sort of setting the stage, in speaking about the broader picture here, is that when we talk about college student alcohol use, this is not just an institutional problem, this really is a community problem. And I want you all to feel a sense of shared ownership in not only, uh, your sense of, perhaps you're here because you feel like you are experiencing some of the challenges associated with this, but I want you to also feel a sense of, of your voice being part of the solution and being part of the picture here, because I really do think that is what's needed, particularly when we're looking at this institution and at this community. When we think about alcohol use, it's a cultural issue, right? Students come to college with their own experiences largely around alcohol. They don't, you know, there's, they are not sort of tabula rasa when it, when it involves alcohol use. So they have their own history and their own experience with alcohol when they come to campus, but they also have their own expectations of what is college life gonna mean for them? What is a, an experience of four years or more at WVU going to look like for them? And I will say, being, you know, voted number-one-party institution, certainly does not stand in WVU's favor as far as that is concerned. But, but certainly the expectations and, and, you know, what, what grown adults have led students to believe, growing up, and cousins and neighbors and so forth, really does have a large role to play here. And, and I'll speak to sort of the policy piece here in a second, and there are others here who can also speak to this. But I do want to, to, to sort of express that, you know, how we help campuses deal with this. I mean, we work with hundreds of campuses, not only educating students, but also gathering data, which is a really key piece of the solution, to find out what does this, what does this problem look like at this particular institution? And from there, campuses can really get their arms around what might some of the solutions be. And within our work with WVU, we have, as I said, I've been here now every year for the past four years running, and the kind of support that we offer is really sort of hands-on tools and resources, and what does the research indicate is most effective in terms of addressing this issue? Because lord knows, campuses have poured hundreds of thousands of dollars towards trying to address this issue, and many of them have not seen results. And I, I will say, in large part because they are not necessarily calling upon the evidence base and what the research indicates might be effective. And so that's a large part of the work that we do, is saying, you know, "What does the research base amount to, and what does the literature indicate might be effective?" And sort of map that and pair that with the data that we're, we're seeing about students and their behaviors and their attitudes and so forth. And, and so how can we sort of marry those two things and come forward with some recommendations? What we propose and what we are certainly informed by is a public health model, and one that looks beyond not just students as individuals, but looks again at this broader community. So we ask questions like, you know, "How many liquor outlets are there in the community? How many bars are there? And what are their policies governing underage access to alcohol? What are their hours of service? To what extent are law enforcement engaged in this issue, and how are they addressing it? Are they working hand-in-hand, are, are the local law enforcement working hand-in-hand with the campus law enforcement on this issue? And how are they collaborating to allocate resources and to, to effectively address the issue? And what about the campus environment itself? You know, to what extent is there a heavy Greek, uh, culture on a campus? Is there, you know, a heavy emphasis on, on football and on sporting events? Let's look at that. And what are the laws and policies that are governing students' access to alcohol? And not only student access, but again, it's, it's a broader issue, not just among students. I will say that, you know, around football games and things like that, we look at broadly speaking, what is the access to alcohol in those environments? So, so there's a whole host of questions that we ask. I mean, that's just sort of a snapshot of some of the things that we look at. But I want you, and I encourage you, to sort of start to think about, what are some of the things in the, the local Morgantown community and that are maybe ingrained in the culture here that give rise to this issue? And how can we start to address some of those things with solutions? And again, apply the evidence base to what we know works, and, and really, you know, use that as a basis for forwarding on the conversation, as, as Chris has mentioned. Chris asked me to sort of situate WVU in the sort of broader context here, and I will just want to take a moment to say, what does the data look like when we, when we look at the data? Four years ago, when I first came to WVU, I sat down with a very full report of the data that was most recently collected among WVU first-year students through our online program. And I will say, you know, there was a lot of bad news in there. I was looking at substantially higher rates of high-risk alcohol use, and very high-risk alcohol use among first-year students at WVU, not just as they were measured in their, sort of, as they were already on campus, but even prior to step footing on, stepping foot on campus. WVU is attracting students that are, that are high-risk drinkers. And, you know, perhaps part of this is a chicken-and-an-egg thing, being classified as a number-one-party school, and we've seen campuses start to address some of that. But then even when we see, how do students look once they're already on campus? WVU seeds more ground to this issue than what we see nationally. So, so not only are students drinking more prior to stepping foot on campus, but they're drinking even more once they, once they come to campus. And what we see evident in the data is also that students are experiencing a higher rate of negative consequences as, as a result of their alcohol use. So, no surprises here, but the extent to which students are, are experiencing or demonstrating that they have damaged property in conjunction with their alcohol use, that they have, have driven under the influence, that they have ridden with a driver that has been drinking, the extent to which they have suffered academic consequences as a result of their alcohol use, injured someone, injured themselves, gotten involved in a fight, and both been victimized and perpetrated sexual assault. All of these things are substantially higher. So, I, I'm gonna put that out there, and that's not great. However, I will say, I think there's some good news to celebrate, and I think that it's really important that we focus on some of these things that we consider strengths, one of which is, when we look at the data year in and year out, it's getting better. And that is part of a national trend, I will say, but it's really also one that I think is really important to bear in mind. So, so for the administrators that are here, I will say, don't assume that the students that you see this year are this, are of the same profile in terms of their alcohol use as the ones that you saw five years ago or 10 years ago, because the data do not bear that out. The other piece is, even if we were just to look at this year's data, there is a substantial number, in fact, a majority of students that, who are not only non-drinkers, that, and by that I mean students who have had no alcohol in the last two weeks, but also students who, who do decide to drink but do so moderately, or at what we consider a low-risk level. And when you combine those number, those students, it actually, it's a majority of your incoming student body that are, we consider healthy. And so I think it's really important to, to consider that and understand that there is a really substantial number of students here who either don't choose to drink, or choose to drink and do so in moderation. We just met with a group of students, many of whom were from Greek life, sorority women, Pan-Hell women, who were pretty vocal about the concerns that they have around student alcohol use and some of the things that they would like to see. So I'm gonna reserve some of the things that we came up with as far as recommendations for WVU, but I just wanted to sort of start there, Chris, and I hope I've done an adequate job of kind of setting the stage of what we think about.
Absolutely. It's really appreciated, especially the perspective that you can provide, because you've been able to see things across the country and then situate them here. And I think the identification of the problems and the trends and some of those underlying factors is absolutely crucial. And also the point that you've made, that things hard, things do change through time. It sounds like programming and other things may be a solution to addressing some of these issues. So, we wanted to also have a perspective from a law enforcement angle, but also a community angle. And so Chief Roberts has been, as he has shared with you, he has been with the WVU Police Department for quite a while. And in that leadership position that you have, I think you've been able to, to see how things have changed over time, which builds somewhat on what Helen was just talking about. But also, you can help us situate the problem from a law enforcement perspective, and we would welcome your comments on this, Chief.
Thank you. Actually, I'd like to kind of preface what I'm gonna say to you. These are not opinions, they're just information. How you want to take them's up to you. But I want to read a list of problems to you. If underage drinking was nothing more than people having a good time, we wouldn't be having this discussion. So let me read some of these problems to you. Youth violence, youth traffic crashes, high-risk sex, youth property crimes, youth injuries, poisoning, psychosis, fatal alcohol syndrome, youth alcohol treatment. Could anybody give me a guess how much that costs, the state of West Virginia annually? Somebody give me a guess? It's somewhere in between that. It's actually $412 million a year. Now, with that in mind, I want to share something with you. The liquor industry, how much profit do you think they made annually? $67 million. You know how much taxes they pay? $23 million. So if you take this, and I'm not a mathematician, but I can even do this in my old age, if you take the taxes that were brought in and subtract that $412 million, you get $390 million deficit. So, you know, a lot of times we hear about the benefits of what the alcohol industry's bringing in, and it does, but there's also a cost associated with it. I think you should kind of know that from a, a West Virginia standpoint. And I think you should also understand that everyone who drinks in West Virginia isn't a WVU student. I think sometimes that gets painted the wrong picture. I want to share with you some language out of the state code that addresses our bar situation. This is straight from the code. It says, "Finds that such private clubs are not saloons or other public places in which the sale and consumption of intoxicating liquors are required to be prohibited by the provisions of the said section 46, article 6 of the Constitution. But to the contrary, private places in which such sale and consumption of intoxicating liquors are constitutionally permitted and authorized." The keynote in this is that it talks about private clubs. And in the date that this was written, it talked about saloons. How many of you hear about saloons today? Nah, it's not a very big topic anymore. And actually, a private club in the day was set up like the VFW, the Eagles. And that's what it was, and Gary could maybe talk to this a little more than I can, but I think one of the things that has not evolved over time is the state statutes covering it. And that's not true just to West Virginia, it's also true in some other states as well, because if you do the research, you'll find the same kind of statutes in other states. So I think those are some things we need to talk about. From a pure enforcement, uh, WVU, Morgantown, has no authority in a private club. The commissioner and the Alcohol Beverage Commission has the authority inside those clubs. And they work with us quite a lot, they're here a lot, and they work the events with us. So it's a joint effort in some ways, but we're restricted in some way. I want to share with you some numbers from Morgantown. Between WVU and MPD, in the year 2012 and '13 combined, we made 2,800 arrests for underage. Along with that, there's something that happens on WVU campus called referrals. A referral is when a student is either greeted by us or someone in the resident hall, and there is no arrest made, but they go through the judicial system. That number was 4,177. So the enforcement's there, and we're actively working on these. One of the things that you, particularly the younger people, need to understand, one of the things we've worked out with the local prosecutor and the magistrates, is on that very first citation, you get an option to go through alcohol counseling. And if you do that, then the citations are dismissed. And, and the philosophy behind that is, is that it's, it's an educational institution, and we should try to educate people. And that does work, because we don't see the same people over and over all the time. We do still see some people over and over, but it does help. So we want to keep working in that way. There are some things that we'd like to talk about that could possibly help address some of the issues that we're confronting, but with that, I'll kind of pass it on.
Thanks, Chief, very much. And in fact, we'll be very interested in your input and everyone's input as we talk about some of the solutions. Chief Preston, I'm gonna ask you to do the same with us too, as we get into that part of the discussion. Chief Preston's here from the Morgantown Police Department. But, you know, one of the things that Chief Roberts has just mentioned, there's a few things I think really helpful for us in situating this. One, one big takeaway, there are challenges within the WVU community with underage drinking. And there are both formal and informal judicial and quasi-judicial ways of approaching this in terms of enforcement. The other important takeaway is that this is a problem, underage drinking is a problem that goes beyond the WVU student body. And of course, all the data and all the literature tell us this. And if you look at, say, for example, NIH fact sheets, National Institutes of Health fact sheets, they really key on the fact that this is an issue and a problem that often affects teenage kids, those entering adolescence. And so this is an issue that's situated within the college community, but also beyond. And I think the chief's comments there are very helpful. And then there's a third thing, Chief, that I heard you say that I think we want to come back to, and that is gaps in regulation and gaps in law, that we really have to work within a legal constitutional system. There are things we can and cannot do. The vestiges of law, the way powers are divided between local and state government, may create gaps, and those are gaps that may need to be assessed and perhaps addressed. And I think that was another big takeaway that you were offering us. So already, we've been able to hear in just a very short period of time, perspective on, on this issue from a broader perspective that Helen has given us, and the chief has kind of situated this in terms, in terms of a community perspective, especially with a law enforcement angle. But there's a real human dimension to this as well. We can talk about numbers, we can talk about the aggregate, and that's absolutely crucial, but we also have to think about the individual impacts and how this affects individuals. We talked about this being a public health issue, and it's an individual health issue as well. And so we're very, very fortunate to have Dr. Charles Whiteman with us tonight, who's able to give us some perspective with his work in the emergency department at WVU hospitals. Dr. Whiteman?
Thank you. It's been very eloquently outlined, the, some of the broader scope of the problem. But in, in the emergency department at Ruby, we see 12-year-olds occasionally, a few times a year, 13 through 15... 13 through 15 is not that common. And I know most of the discussion here is about college-age drinking, but we do see people pre-college, and as you've mentioned, many people have come to college with vast experience, in some cases with alcohol. And once you get to driving age, the 16, 17-year-olds who aren't in college yet, it is not uncommon, especially in motor vehicular crashes and other personal injuries, ATV crashes, other personal injury things, alcohol is a common problem. Use of alcohol has been around for millennia. Man learned how to, or discovered fermented things, fruits, other things, and found that they sort of liked how that made them feel. And it is a matter of concentration. Not everyone drinks, but those who do, if you drink responsibly, as we have on here, high-risk drinking. You know, drinking in moderation can make people feel a little more relaxed, it can make social interactions sometimes more pleasurable. But then we can move very quickly into high-risk drinking behavior, not just for underage people, but in the emergency department, we see it in all age ranges. When I received the invitation a few weeks ago to be on this panel, I sort of started keeping a little tally. I mentioned that the weekend begins on Wednesday. Wednesday is usually ladies' night. And Thursday, things will pick up, Friday, Saturday, through the weekend, especially as weather has turned warm here again, things have picked up. On a Wednesday night, we, in Morgantown, you know, alcoholism and problems with alcohol are pervasive everywhere, not in the United States, worldwide. Some people cannot handle their alcohol, and it is a disease, and a terrible disease that ravages the body in ways that are difficult to describe. We have our chronic alcoholics here who spend their time under our bridges when it's warm, and go to our shelters when it's cold. And we will see two or three of those a day in our emergency department, every day. Some seeking rehab day after day, and then deciding, no, I don't want to go to rehab. And these people are walking into our emergency department with blood alcohols of 400 or .4, walking, talking, and tolerant of the alcohol. That's a separate situation than the underage drinking and our adults, but they are here as part of the problem, because some of them are diverting alcohol to our younger age people, because they clearly can drink, and they can clearly buy alcohol. And a lot of alcohol that gets to our underage people is diverting. When it comes to our underage college population, on a Wednesday night, I may see one or two patients brought to me, and I refer to it as the bar closing crowd. I often will have a little tail, I go to work at 11 o'clock, I can usually get the waiting room, things under control, and about between 2:00 and 4:00, depending on the day of the week, there will be between 2:00 and 10:00 transports, all alcohol-related, coming to me, because, A, they couldn't walk home, they were too drunk for that, or they were visibly intoxicated and interacted with our police force, and were given citations or recommended to come and come to the emergency department. And some of these end up having trauma. Okay, I'm here, my experience is at WVU hospitals at Ruby, but I have friends, residents I trained and now work at Mon General Hospital, and they go there too. EMS transports both directions. We probably get a little bit more at Ruby, because anyone who has any significant trauma to them, especially marks on their head, are going to come to me or my coworkers at Ruby, because Mon General doesn't have neurosurgeons or neurologists, so if there's a head injury problem, they're going to come to us. And more significant traumas come to us. On Thursday and Friday night, typically, I will leave at 7:00 AM with somewhere between 2:00 and 4:00 people who are waiting to sober up enough to go home. Okay? And many of these people have minor trauma, and you can't clear them from their trauma until their alcohol is down to a level that you're comfortable it's not interfering with your evaluation. On a Saturday night, that number will often be six or seven. On a football game weekend night, I may have 10 or 12 people there that are sobering up. Now, not everyone who comes in is happy to be there. And so, it is not uncommon, I have to put a security officer one-on-one with the person for a period of time to keep them from leaving. I can't go having someone with a blood alcohol of 250 walk out in my department, walk in front of a car, because they're too drunk to see what's coming down the road and get plastered. Once they make it to me, a duty has been established with me, I've got to keep them until I can find someone safe to send them home with, if they're uninjured, or if they have trauma, I'm probably stuck with them until their alcohol is down about 80. Okay? And we can do a little quick math on the numbers. A beer, a mixed drink with one shot of liquor in it, a glass of wine, is going to braise your alcohol about 25 points. Okay? So, four drinks in an hour will put you at about 100 or .1. Now, the state code talks about whole-blood alcohols, and we deal with serum alcohols, but sort of through the magic of math, the numbers are essentially the same, and you can talk about them almost interchangeably. But the state code does prefer to whole-blood alcohol. It is not uncommon that college youth will be transported to me with blood alcohols north of 250. So that means 10 drinks. Not only to get served once, or fined to drink once, they found 10. It is not uncommon that, especially in the fall of the year, when we see many people who are maybe a little more naive and starting their high-risk alcohol behavior, once or twice a month, someone will come in so intoxicated, they don't breathe well, and we put them on a ventilator and stick them up in the ICU for them to wake up later that day. Now, they're off the ventilator in probably 10 hours, and probably discharged straight from the ICU later that day. But many of these people truly are at risk of stopping breathing and dying of alcohol A large percentage of the people that are brought to me have been vomiting and are at risk of aspiration if someone doesn't take appropriate care of them. You know, and we'll have people say, well, in the olden days, we just took them home, laid them on their side, and kept an eye on them. In the olden days, some people died too. So, there's, that's part of the cost. Now, just to walk through the door, even if I don't do any imaging of your head or any other things, and you've sobered up a good bit because of the startled ride of the ambulance, the ambulance ride's going to be probably $400 or $500 to bring you to me. The least you're probably going to get out of that emergency department visit is probably $600, $800. If we observe you and check your alcohol, and you get a head CT scan, or you need other imaging, you're pushing that into the thousands very quickly and never been admitted to the A lot of the comment about injury, being in fights, injuring themselves, injuring someone else, a lot of those people aren't in the 250, 300 range that are, have been vomiting on themselves and unable to maintain control of their bowel and their bladder. You know, but they have punched things, they've punched other people. They have, when they've tried to leave the bars, just not been able to negotiate that curb and have gone down and face-planted. You know, and they say, well, you know, I wasn't driving, well, yeah, you weren't driving, but you also weren't walking very well that night. So, there, as I say, I've been on the faculty floor nearly 25 years now. I came to school in the fall of '77 here when the drinking age was 18. And actually, I arrived on campus as a 17-year-old, it was a couple months before it was legal for me to go to the bars downtown. I finished my undergrad in medical school here, and then left for three years to do my residency in Southern California. And during that time, the drinking age went up. And when I came back, a lot of the bars were closed. But, there's still a lot of bars, there's still a lot of ways to get alcohol. When I told one of my coworkers I was going to be on this panel, she said, well, yeah, I went down to the bar a couple weeks ago, and got there early because I was meeting some of my girlfriends there, and she said they put on my wristband that I was over 21, and someone made the comment, you're going to be popular tonight. There are lots of ways to find alcohol, and one of the other things I was asked to mention is talk about some of the other things that happens, how does lead other health and safety It's not uncommon, once or twice a month, we'll have a young lady come in, said, you know, I woke up and I didn't have any underwear on. When I went out to the bar, I had underwear on. I don't know what happened. Somewhere their underwear ran away. In addition to the fights and things that can happen, and just being unable to walk and personal injuries. It is a significant problem. And there is, there is an option in Morgantown, as best I can tell, still, that Bartlett House has a bit of an inebriate shelter option. It doesn't help me a whole lot, because you have to get there before 3:00. And the bars start taking last call about 2:00, so most of the people that are coming out are coming out after 3:00, and so they've shut down their operation for the night. But many, some people do go there, some of our chronic alcoholics end up going there. But you have to have a blood alcohol less than 300, and many of our chronics are walking, talking at 400, so they're not candidates for it. So, they often come to me too, in Milton.
Thank you, doctor. And the comments that the doctor has made, I think, are very important. Think about this in terms of the dangers, not only of underage drinking, but also high-risk drinking. And think about the fact that it's not just the consumption itself and what that does to the body, but also how high-risk drinking can lead to other health problems, whether it's self-inflicted or inflicted by others upon an individual. And this is a very, very, very serious concern. And so, what we've been able to do in this first part of this session is really start to situate this problem in terms of some evidence, in terms of some experience, in terms of knowledge for those individuals here who deal with this as part of their jobs, and help to give us perspective. We have some other folks on the panel who, what I'd like to do, in the interest of time and making certain that we move forward and we get participation, I'd like to ask Mayor Celine, I'd like to ask Evan, and also like to ask Gig, not only to talk about your perspective of what are some of the problems, but let's start transitioning this a little bit about some of the initiatives that are also taking place. Something very significant happened today, Mayor, with the Safe Communities memorandum. And so, I'd like to start with you, Mayor Celine, and tell us a little bit about Morgantown's perception of this, but also some of the initiatives and some of the partnerships that you see as necessary moving forward in addressing this.
So from a community perspective, and from a sort of whole-region perspective, some of the things that we've noticed, and some of the impacts that happen in our neighborhoods and in our downtown, is that in our downtown, we have a late-night economy and a daytime economy. And in between, we need to make sure that we clean the town, that we make sure that when people open up their shops in the morning, that there isn't throw-up and other kinds of experiment on the ground and other things from the night before. So, people who maybe are downtown late at night, don't see it as clearly as in the daytime, but when you get to morning, some of the people who have shops downtown are very upset because it isn't, it isn't as clean as they would like. In the neighborhoods as well, when people are mixing, when you have student neighborhoods next to neighborhoods that are owner-occupied and there are, that are families and retirees involved, there's sort of a difference in culture between places where people want to have a party, and they want to stay up, and they want to have friends over, and often very late into the night, and not responding well when the neighbors are asking for it to be quieter, and then other kinds of things, like on game days, where there's some conflicts between houses where people are having parties and houses where people are wanting to just enjoy their own, enjoy their own property. So, I guess, part of the perspective is that I think that this has been going on for a long time, as we've been talking about. I think that it kind of goes up and down as far as trying to work with groups of students, work with groups of neighbors, get people together to think about how to address these issues, and how to keep people safe, how to get people home safely at night. We've had a, in the past, a Responsible Hospitality Institute initiative, where we were really working together with the person that owned the taxi companies, student government. We had the principal from the, from the high school. We had all different people, a couple of council members, and law enforcement going through the downtown together, late night, trying to figure out how to make the whole system safer. How to, where to put a taxi stand, where to have the buses come, how to, how to ensure that people were looking out after each other and getting, and getting home safely. Because the last thing that we want is someone to be harmed in our downtown, someone to be harmed in one of our neighborhoods, and, you know, how, how do you face parents? How do you, I used to work victim and witness assistance at the courthouse for four years, which some of you may or may not know, but that was, that was my part-time job. And so I would see some of the students, one of them was an international student from Turkey that was on the country, Turkey, that had been hit when he was downtown in some sort of a fight with group, group against group, and his whole mouth was wired shut, and he was, you know, having difficulty finishing his education. And it really made a huge impact on him, his family, you know, how they felt about the United States, how I felt about students. It was not, it does not look, it does not look nice. Also, sometimes there's, there was a certain person that I'm not going to say his name, but I keep thinking about his name, but I would just call him Mr. Breast Knuckles, and he would be somebody that would be out in different, different places, I don't think necessarily downtown, but up, up in some of the neighborhoods, and he would, probably also downtown, but he would, he would always have his breast knuckles in his pocket, and he'd be looking for, for somebody to, somebody to clock. So, it, it, one white, young woman was a model who had had her face, her face bashed in, and not by that person, but just with a beer mug. So there, are there significant things that happen that I'm sure all of us here are not proud of, that I think when people start out in the evening, if they can think about who they're going to be with, where they're going to go, how much they're going to drink? Are they going to alternate with drinking with having some water? Are they going to, at a certain time, stop and go home? How are they going to get home? Is that going to be a safe, is that going to be a safe situation? So, I see a lot of fun downtown. I see people drinking responsibly, having dinner, going to a show, and that is the model that I wish that we could, you know, that I wish that we could adopt and that we could have people consider when they're going out late at night, rather than this high-risk, high-risk behavior that leaves you vulnerable to all of the, the things that you don't want to have happen at night. And I think another consideration or something that I would like people to kind of think about is, when a student graduates, they would want their diploma to mean something. And if you go, my husband just went to another university on an accreditation visit, and he mentioned where he was from, and he got a negative comment. And, and it was from, like, the admissions person at that institution was making reference to this institution. And I think that all of the students here, whether they're high-risk drinkers or not, when they're doing their academics, they're working hard. And when they're done, they'd like to have their, my daughter is an engineering student here, she would like her diploma to mean something. And so I think that as a community and as a university, the more that we can work together to make this a safe community, which is our, our other segue. We have two persons who are co-chairs of Safe Communities, and I was wondering if Marty Shamberger would raise her hand, and Colleen Harshbarger. So we're, we're doing a Safe Communities certification, and briefly, it entails a year of collecting data about our community, learning about our community, coming up with some strategies. It does not just include high-risk drinking or high-risk other kinds of behaviors, but it includes the workforce, it includes, obviously, educational institutions, hospitals, getting data from, from all different directions, and choosing maybe four or five strong areas that we want to work on. And, and it's the first time that a university and a city-
Yes.
-have worked together to achieve this certification. So we're very proud that we just, we just signed on, and this also includes the county. So we had a three-way signing all together, which I very much appreciated, because I think if we're going to work together, we need to actually work together and make something of it.
Absolutely.
Anyway, I, I really am proud of Morgantown, and I would like to see us take advantage of the good things in Morgantown and try to do what we can to diminish the things that don't make us.
Right. And the Safe Communities partnership, which was, actually, if you go to WVU today, it's on there today, is a, really, I think, a very good example of how university and community can work together and will work together to address problems about, not only with, as you said, it's, it's across the range, it's about the wellness, and it's about the safety of our community across many different areas, but it creates those lines of communication that are needed, right? And it creates those-
Makes a big- Makes a big, makes a huge difference.
Yeah. And so it's a very important development.
So some of the, I just wanted to mention four things that I'd like people to think about moving forward as far as Morgantown. If we can develop, especially as all fellow mountaineers, if we can develop pride in our community collectively, if we can develop a sense of citizenship that we all live here together, that we can work together and enjoy paddling on the river, going to a show, going for a hike in the mountains, um, stewardship, stewardship of each other, stewardship of, uh, you know, other people's property, having that feeling that, that we're masters of our universe and we're not here to destroy it, we're here to, we're here to keep it up. And, and just keep keeping that one Morgantown, one WVU feeling going.
Yeah, I agree. I think that those are great comments. And in fact, Mayor Celine, one of the things that you talked about really was, you know, the students' role in all of this and, you know, and how we are one community, one, one WVU. And Evan, uh, I know that you come to us tonight, you know, thinking about your perceptions on the problem and you represent the students. And we're also really interested in hearing what you think, you know, what are some of the efforts that are underway now to help to inform your peers and to help address these issues and, and to create this safe community that we're talking about? So I'm going to leave it to you, Evan.
Thank you very much. I know, um, I guess kind of getting into the more fraternity side events that we do have social functions, kind of, I think it's really good seeing some of the steps that we are currently taking to kind of mitigate the risk for the fraternities and also the other sororities that we interact with on a weekly basis. We actually, as an IFC, just reviewed the social policy that each fraternity at West Virginia University currently follows. And some of the actions that we take part in and that we have in place is that every single time that there is a social function, whether it be at a house or at a third-party venue, that we want to know what is occurring, where that is occurring at, what participating organizations are going to be involved. And then also just kind of touch on some of the things that we want each social function to have, where there might be drinking occurring, is just there'd be sober monitors for every, so many students that would be at the social function, that there'd be a sober individual there to kind of take care, that there would be someone watching the doors, that would be checking IDs, that would be able to react if there was ever an emergency situation or that would, there would be someone there that is clear-headed to kind of be able to take care of any situation. We also would have, um, implementing a closed party system in all the fraternity houses so that whenever there is a social function, there isn't individuals showing up from out of town that do not have a place at that house and do not really have the interests of Morgantown. And that we just kind of make sure, we want to minimize any individuals that kind of might, would, would be willing to just like throw a beer can at like a passing car or kind of not caring about what kind of ideals we want to hold true. And then also, I guess, some of the other really good activities that I think are beneficial to students right now is I really enjoy kind of the Up All Night program, that there is a place for students to kind of go that isn't the bars and it isn't kind of expected to, that there's going to be alcohol there for everything. Cause I know, kind of whenever you look at it, it's like, let's say it's 11, 12 o'clock on a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday night, what is there to do in Morgantown besides going to bar? It's kind of, I think the real question that we really can kind of look into and kind of address is that, uh, students are, they have a high-stress environment, they're working from 8:00 AM till 12 o'clock, Monday through Friday, doing their studying classes, all those things. It's kind of like, what other options do they currently have or what, what are they presented to besides going down to the bars, going down to the clubs? I think that kind of shifting away from just the really big impact of alcohol is just kind of like, right now, that's almost one of the only avenues for stress relief. So it's just kind of like, what are, what are other options besides Up All Night? What other options can we as a community provide to those students? And that's something that I would really like to kind of see talked about and kind of addressed as a community.
Excellent. And again, what are the, you know, a lot of the solutions are student-led solutions or solutions where the students have ideas, help to mobilize resources in the community at the university to address this. That's very realistic, it's very practical and it's very commendable. And I think the point that you make as well, Evan, about what are the alternatives to going downtown or going to a house party? Cause I, one of the things that Mayor Celine said too is that this is just not an issue that's downtown. And so it's, it's, you know, what are the alternatives that are out there, positive alternatives, uh, to address some of this and to mitigate some of these issues as you mentioned, Evan? So it's very, very helpful. Education becomes a big part of this. And the West Virginia Alcohol Beverage and Control, uh, 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 help me, Gig.
Administration.
Administration, thank you. Um, has been involved in education efforts and been involved in trying to raise awareness of the dangers of high-risk drinking and the importance of following the law. And one of the reasons why we wanted to have Gig with us is that the, the alcohol beverage, uh, I don't know-
Control.
Control Administration, uh, really can provide, I, I think, perspective to us not only about what's happening in Morgantown, but how you approach this at a state level, at a statewide level. So Gig?
Yeah, I'll be glad to. Uh, so much has been said and I wanted to just piggyback off a couple of comments. You know, when we think of, uh, uh, high-risk drinking and underage drinking, it's not just a Morgantown problem, it's not just a WVU problem, it's a problem that is throughout the community, it's pervasive throughout the US. I'm comforted in that what Helen shared with us, the numbers are coming down, uh, that's part of the trend and it's also part of a collective effort. We all have, it's like building a house, we all have a tool, whether you are a student, whether we are law enforcement, you're an educator, you, you, uh, local government, it takes a tool. I'd like for you to, just for a moment, think about, I'm just going to ask a question and you don't have to answer, but, uh, can I? How many people drink socially? Okay. We're talking about NI triple A, roughly about 80% drink. If you can just reflect back to when you, you know, were drinking and probably should or should not have, uh, and think about those access points and those outlets. And certainly, you know, uh, access happens at retail, class A establishment, class B establishments, they happen at bars, they happen at taverns, but they also happen at friends and family. So I think that we do ourselves a great disservice if we really don't, you know, broaden the scope of this and look at limiting access at all points. Because the points that have, have been made by the doctor is, is, you know, there's a lot of negative consequences here. If you're 15 years old and you start drinking, you're four times more likely to, to, uh, have alcohol dependency problems. Um, the NI triple A National Institute of Alcoholism and Alcohol Abuse tells us, was it Helen, 1,800, 1,600 students die each year from the misuse of alcohol? 70,000 cases of sexual assault are reported. The Department of Justice tells us as few as one in five get reported. So you do the math there. Uh, 600,000 injuries, 50 to 60% of drownings, fires, falls, deaths, suicides, they all have their origins in, in, in a drug. And most often that drug, let's not forget, alcohol is a drug and, uh, they have their origins in the misuse of that. So there is economic costs and there's also a social cost. And Chief Bob, you, um, there's numbers, I can't really, uh, say yes or no, but I can say I think they're a little bit more. And when I was on a partnership to promote community wellbeing, the, the, the total cost was around $600 million. And that's your, you know, adjudication and your, your, your drain on your, your judicial system, law enforcement, social welfare, I mean, there's a lot of different things that happen. If someone doesn't fit into society, someone can't hold a job, someone doesn't have the skills necessary to do that. And, uh, there, you know, it's a balance there and I'm not here to articulate or, or show favor for one or the other, but let me give you an idea here. In, in the state of West Virginia, there are roughly 5,000 establishments. And, uh, establishments are in two different categories. There are on-premise establishments where alcohol is consumed on-site and there's off-premise where, you know, we think of grocery stores, convenience stores, carryouts. There's other specialty type of licenses, special events, wine, breakfast, you know, things like that. Um, that, if the horse unit does generate some revenue for the state, they employ nearly 40,000 jobs. Most of the bars, most of the taverns and, and businesses do the right thing. But let's just be clear here, you know, Commissioner Moats in history of years has been very aggressive in, in making sure that code is followed. And, uh, if you choose to allow someone in who's under the age of 21, it is our expectation that you watch for passoffs. Because come on, we were young, we, we know what happened in there. Yes, you get stick, yes, you get a, an armband, but you're going to do a passoff. So if you're going to allow, and then the code allows it, you know, we don't make the code, we, you know, that's what the legislature does. And, uh, the code does allow for, for people to go into a bar under the age of 21. So, uh, we have to limit that, that access there. Um, I just, just lost my train of thought there. Uh, of the, um, we also, it's important to consider that, that, you know, the, the pre-party and the post-party, it has really changed over the, the years, the alcohol industry. Think of this, if you will, there were not the flavored marshmallow and, and frou-frou and, and, you know, all those sweet alcohol. So you have young people who are drinking hard liquor that used to be, it was just kind of a, kind of a beer, you know, it's a guy thing, you know, the macho thing and, you know, and sorry, but, but, you know, the numbers are the numbers and, uh, and, uh, you know, younger people, females would, would, you know, have beer or wine coolers or that, wine coolers. So, you know, that has changed. Technology has changed, the availability, you know, you, you know, the old rotary system, you know, when we go out and do a compliance check, you know, you know, law enforcement went up, ABC's in town. Well, now they can just get on their cellphone and boom, everybody knows. So, so we go to great efforts to try to maintain integrity of a compliance check. Um, and think of this, uh, mixing, uh, we mixed with coffee maybe, but now you have those high-energy drinks. So that, as a Dr. Retell, will retard the onset of when the body starts to shut itself down because it's had too much to drink. Well, it's giving a false sense of sobriety and it's making, you know, everybody around, you know, who's maybe the designated driver or what have you, uh, you know, they, they can't monitor it as well. So there are some unique challenges and there's some certainly, uh, opportunities. We at the ABCA rely upon our relationship with local law enforcement, with county, with state. And, uh, you know, because there's an equation here, you know? In the code, we are given a responsibility to, uh, to enforce it and to issue licenses. And in the event that, uh, a violation occurs, the commissioner will take all that information and determine what, what will happen. You know, will it be a fine, will it be a suspension or will it be a revocation? We simply can't go in and take a license away. There is due process. And if we move for revocation, we pretty much have to have our ducks in rot- we have to have our homework done because there will be a, they can appeal it to a hearing examiner and if that doesn't, they don't like that decision, then they can appeal it to a circuit court and then they can go all the way to Supreme Court. So, you know, the, our relationship that we have is, is, is key. And, you know, the, the importance of, of working with all facets. And as I look around, Mayor, I see, you know, your predecessor, uh, Mayor Justice, we worked with him when he was in charge of the Greeks, uh, Evan. And, you know, students are part of the solution, they're not part of the problems. And the, the point that, that the chief made is spot-on. It's just not WVU students, it's students, I mean, it's adults, people coming from Maryland, coming from Pittsburgh, coming from, from Detroit and particularly some of the most violent crimes, you know, are, are people who are coming and, and bringing drugs in. So I think it really takes a collaborative community approach. Not one agency, not one person, not one, uh, group has all the answers, but I think understanding the problem, having someone like Helen Stubbs who can talk about environmental strategies. And by the way, Evan, that was, you know, a, a, a risk factor, a protective factor. When you said alternate, uh, uh, opportunity to do alternate things, that's a good, I mean, that is a protective factor that will enhance your ability to reduce high-episodic drinking. And so having Friday classes, having things to do late at night, and which by the way, the WELL WVU, uh, won a national award, so I'll stop there.
Gig, that's fantastic. Really appreciate your comments and perspective. And again, situating this in terms of a statewide phenomenon, and I know that you work with your counterparts in other states as well, and so there's a, again, the sort of situating this in a state and a national level. And a big takeaway for me is I didn't realize how drinking consumption had changed because of products. I wasn't thinking about the, the energy drinks or the marshmallows or whatever. I, I hadn't thought about that. And so, you know, those are important things to keep in mind, how that also changes the dynamics and the complexion of the issue. You know, we've heard now from everybody, and there's a lot of perspective that's been offered, but this is a town hall meeting. And, uh, I would like to, uh, I'd like to ask, um, you know, we have many folks tonight here who are key stakeholders, who are involved in this issue, who have ideas about addressing and preventing the issues of underage and high-risk drinking. And I'd like to start to open up the floor for some of this interaction because that's what a town hall is all about. And, um, one of the things is we've just talked about WELL WVU and so I'd like to actually ask Dr. Kathy Ura, uh, tell us a little bit about some of the initiatives that you have here at WVU, uh, to address some of this. And so I think you'd be a great person to, to mention it.
All right. Well, the initiatives is a joint effort. Uh, WELL WVU is composed of Wellness and Health Promotion, uh, our Counseling Service, Care Center, as well as, uh, Student Health. And again, it is a coordination of all those departments that have the efforts being brought forth. So we have from our Student Assistance Program where the, um, students come who have any offense, you know, any sanctions or areas of concern. And Dr. Casperwitz here oversees it and Dr. Brian Quigley is our psychiatrist. But also our Wellness and Health Promotion, Colleen Harshberger's back there. And there has been an incredible amount of educational efforts that have been brought forth. I think you mentioned a national award, it was in her area. Uh, there is a number of initiatives from Live Well, uh, programming, to Lead Well, we're mentors, and I'll let her explain those if she could. And, um, then, you know, I think there's a big, I want to say there's a broad-based coordination with other efforts on campus, uh, from Adventure West Virginia to our rec centers, our, uh, you know, our rec center, our new, uh, rec fields. So there are alternatives across campus trying to work together to give students alternatives to their drinking. And I believe we have a, a handout, uh, that is in the back that kind of lists all those initiatives.
So if you think about, when there is a problem, we think about our first responders, you know, reacting and taking care of that problem. But I think one of the things that we also have heard tonight is that our first responders, for example, our law enforcement community, is also involved in prevention, trying to prevent these things from happening. And, you know, another first responder group in all of this is our fire department. And so I wanted to ask our chief, uh, for the, for the Morgantown Fire Department, Mark Carvassus, to, to tell us a little bit about some of the efforts that you all have been involved in to help promote and prevent.
Good evening. Well, as the fire department and with the fire department, we do see a lot of interaction with, uh, the drinking community, with underage drinkers. We run with EMS, we run with the police department. And a lot of times we, uh, end up being ones who initially initiate care on taking care of somebody until they can be transported up to Dr. White's facility, taken to wherever or seen to a safe way home. One of the things we've noticed over the years, and this comes through my fire marshal's division, is the explosion of house parties. Um, we talked about the access and the underage drinking and this being, talking about underage especially, a lot of this underage drinking is occurring at house parties. We do have enforcement in the bars, we do go out and do occupancy checks and we make sure that the establishments that are licensed and operating in the community keep to the levels of number of people that they are supposed to have, make sure exiting is safe and make sure that those establishments are operating safely. Unfortunately, and as Chief Preston can attest, Chief Robertson, the rest of us know, house parties are uncontrolled. And it is not uncommon for my officers to go in and to a house party where you will have 300, 400, 500 kids in a house. We had a recent incident here just last weekend, they pulled 400 and some out of a four-bedroom apartment up in Sunnyside. So not only are we only addressing, you know, an uncontrolled issue where there aren't doormen, there aren't people checking IDs, somebody has gone out and purchased a keg, purchased alcohol, brought it into a house, and these are hard-fought to find. In the winter, they're closed up, the buildings are closed up, we can't locate them. So we rely on other ways of doing it, whether it's through instant messaging and through, uh, the internet and some of the postings they do there. We do go out and we stop those events and we turn around, we do turn around, pass them on to the police, the police department gets involved, the university gets informed of what's going on. And we do our part through that to try to limit that. And that's how the fire department goes after that. We do see a good result of it because these are, again, large parties, large number of people, and unfortunately, most of them are underage at these things.
You know, one of the things, one of the themes that's come up in our discussion this evening is that this issue is somewhat of a constant, okay? And it occurs, you know, we talked about the weekends starting on Wednesday and what have you. But we also know that sometimes incidents of high-risk drinking are also event-driven, okay? And this is highly recognized across the country in the university community, that sometimes it might be sporting events or certain times of the year where this is event-driven. And there's actually a national association called- And there's actually a national association called, actually, it's an international association, it's called the International Town and Gown Association, or ITGA, in which WVU has been involved and so has the city of Morgantown. And one of the particular things that the ITGA looks for are best practices of how communications can be improved between the town and the university to try to anticipate and address some of these issues. And some of the work that's been done, I've become familiar with the fact that our police departments do a lot of communication in anticipation of event-driven activities perhaps, or event-driven, high-risk situations for excessive drinking and public safety concerns. And Chief Preston, I would like you to maybe speak briefly to how the best practice that you see in terms of coordinating some of this communication.
Actually, one of the best practices that we have gone to utilizing is not just with the police departments, but it incorporates the fire departments, it incorporates student organization services and a number of other activities. Every week, there's a weekend action plan that's published and promulgated and distributed to, I don't even know how many people are on that email list anymore. Yeah, it's very extensive. But the idea being is to be that proactive, the intercedent to stop, you know, the at-risk, the high-risk behaviors before they happen. Not so much as to stop people from having a good time, not to stop the fraternities from having their functions, not from having the sporting events, but the idea being that we can increase our presence during those events to try to dissuade the binge drinking, the overcrowding at the houses, the other at-risk behavior, the roof diving, you know, you name it, there's quite an extensive list of undesirable behaviors where people have gotten, you know, injured as a result of their, things they do while they're impaired to the alcohol. And some have resulted in death, some have resulted in permanent injury and lots and lots of scars over the years.
I appreciate it very much. I'd like to invite some comment and conversation about what are we doing and what might we do as part of addressing this issue of underage and high-risk drinking? And we've got another microphone over there, so I'm going to play sort of Phil Donahue here. I'm going to run up the stairs. How you doing? Okay.
Yeah, I'm a grad student at WVU in the psychology department. Before I talk about my, like, opinions or suggestion about what we could do, I want to bring up a point that, like, underage drinking or high-risk drinking is not just affecting the community, but also individual, like, think about alcohol as a gateway drug to some other drug, because the more alcohol you have in your body, it impair your judgment. So, when there are some drug around you, you're more susceptible to that. So, I always think of alcohol as a gateway drug to other type of substance use as well. So, that would be something that we need to address. And I think what the issue we have here is not that we have so many underage drinker or we have so many bars that people can go to, but rather the way that people drink. Like, right now, what I'm observing is that people tend to have the mentality that they want to go out, drink to get drunk, which is the main issue that we have here. We're not having issue with people drinking, but we have issue with people drinking too much. So, I guess what, at a community level or at a university level, what we can try to do, or one of the goal that we want to achieve is trying to, like, educate underage drinker or just adult drinker in general to adapt a responsible type of drinking, or I usually call that a drinking allegacy, because, I mean, alcohol is going to be a main part of our life, given its legal status. At some point, we are going to invite out to a bar, but then we can't drink like an undergrad or a college student. So, I think it would be important to try to, like, tell, like, teach people how to drink more moderately. So, I think the mayor and the doctor made a good point that it's important for teenage, for college student or drinker in general to drink more moderately. So, as a prevention, because I mainly work with underage drinker and people who have citation for possession of controlled substances, I can only speed up that in an intervention perspective instead of a prevention perspective. So, as an intervention, what I notice is that, like, right now in Morgantown court, they tend to be more linear toward underage drinker than those people who get a possession charge, because for a possession charge, they got sent to some community-based intervention that they have to go through a course, but for underage drinker, they tend to be more linear and just let them pay the fine and that's it. So, in that case, then, those underage drinker might not benefit from their experience with being in a group, trying to talk to other people about their drinking or even think about their own drinking. And, because right now, I work at one of the community center to do some counseling for underage drinker. And lately, we start to get those underage drinker involved in a group session where we help them to try to reflect on their own drinking and try to, like, tell them or try to tell them that if you choose to continue that drinking pattern, at least try to anticipate what is going to happen that night and plan ahead of time. So, that's what we're trying to do at a community level to at least prevent them from future high-risk drinking, because to be realistic, they are not going to stop drinking, but if we can at least help them to cut down on their drinking, then we can work toward that problem that we have here.
Those are great comments. Think about the three main points that you just made. Personal responsibility comes back to a lot of this, right? Personal responsibility is crucial. Also acknowledging people are going to drink, but we want to encourage people to drink responsibly. And the third thing is, is that if we are going to have systems of justice or discipline, make certain that they're consistent, that they're transparent, and that they have teeth, if you will. And so, that's what I'm hearing from you, and that's a really important perspective that you've just shared with us. Do we have a question over here?
Well, first of all, I think it'd be really easy to say that everyone here has learned something today. And that's, you know, I think we need more events like this and continued discussion because I think that it's been a problem in our community for so long that people have just accustomed to that's what happened Friday and Saturday night, you know, community members, students. But I wanted to touch on something that the mayor and Evan had talked about, which is pride, citizenship, and stewardship. I'm lucky to have been born and raised here in Morgantown, and I've always considered this community my home. But when you talk to a lot of kids who have come here from out of state, why did they come here? How did they find Little Morgantown? It's always a big question for me. And the answer is, well, I knew some people who went there and they had a great time. I don't think we want to change that sentiment necessarily. I don't think we want people to come here and have a bad time. The question is, how do we shift the way they have a good time? And the thing that this forum has done particularly well is highlighting the sober reality of the problem. We all have touched on elements of the reality that we live in. But I'd like to hear some more discussion on how we shift why we have this problem. And I guess that would be my comment. Thank you.
I think that's an excellent comment. How do we shift? What are some of the solutions that are out there? I think we've already started to hear some of this about having a sense of community, which you are absolutely on target about, that, you know, we're community members first. Something else that I've heard from Evan is some of the small steps, but very important steps that are being taken to divert individuals from abuse of alcohol use, whether it's, you know, the work that's being done with the fraternity council and others. So, Evan, I'm going to actually throw the question back to you because this really is a student-led question, and thank you for your comments.
I, just like going back to some of the points that I talked about earlier, I really would like to kind of see more options for students, like maybe have the libraries open till two or three o'clock in the morning because that's whenever students are out. There's hundreds of students on High Street walking up and down, getting some late-night snacks at two o'clock in the morning. So, why is it that only restaurants and only bars and only clubs are the only sources for entertainment at that time? And then also, kind of, I would also really like to kind of go back to kind of like the judicial action and kind of, why is it that, I definitely agree that education has a very good component of this, but it's those individuals that repeatedly would be getting underaged. How about we kind of maybe implement a program where they could go downtown at two or three o'clock in the morning, completely sober, and then maybe doing some volunteer work at that time and helping out the community and kind of really seeing what the average intoxicated student looks like and kind of maybe be able to take a step back from that and kind of try to facilitate more programs for students or maybe have educational programs. I know, like, I'm a very big proponent of basic first aid and TPR classes. I have my EMT certification when I lived in Maryland. So, maybe offering those programs to students at the mountain layer, at the library, downtown, at night, instead of just having the bars open, kind of being able to give those students an opportunity to better themselves, to kind of learn something instead of just seeing how many drinks that they consume in the shortest amount of time or playing drinking games at night. It's just kind of having those opportunities. And I mean, I feel like we, there's definitely a lot of grant applications out there, they kind of be able to get the money for those activities, but I think if we look into it, there could definitely be a lot of solutions that students would, what students would like to see and students would really kind of utilize if they were given the opportunity to.
If I could add something to that.
Please, Chief.
If I go back in years and think back to when I was in the military, they used to have something on the bases that they called airmen's clubs. And in these clubs, you couldn't drink because we were all underage, but they had theaters, foosball, pool tournaments, all kinds of things for us to do other than drink. And that's really what you're talking about, is changing the culture. But if you don't provide that level of entertainment, they're going to seek it out. But with that said, there has to be some changes. Like Gary said a minute ago, there's people coming here from all over the place. I mean, we get people from Ohio, Maryland, Pennsylvania. Why are they coming here? You know, one of the things, and in this state, it's kind of unique, and I don't know if Gig would say this too, but Morgantown is somewhat different than most of the communities in West Virginia because it has this institution here amongst it, and we have this large group of underage people. So, what we may need might not suit the rest of the state. Like, we might need here in Morgantown that you can't enter these bars unless you're 21 or over. You know, we're going to have to think somewhat out of the box. And that's difficult when you look at a whole state versus a county.
Yes.
Would that be a fair statement? I don't know if I'm...
Well, certainly, you know, it's not a cookie cutter approach once that fits all, you know, we, and law enforcement understands that and that they're the experts and the hires and the ears on, you know, where areas need to be concentrated on. Believe it or not, Chief, Mon County does not have the highest buy rate.
Oh, I knew that, yeah.
That distinction is Wood County.
Wood County.
For right now, but, you know, environmental strategies work best, you know, because they have more opportunity, they last longer, because every year, you got a new crew of freshmen coming in.
I'd like to also just contribute something. So, I love the student input and advocacy for alcohol-free events and programming, and that's something that, to a certain extent, already exists here with Up at Night, but there, you know, that said, I think that there's a lot of room for more resources being put towards that. One of the things that I will say from the evidence base is it's very clear that alcohol-free programming is not just there, not only does it attract students who don't drink or might drink in a low-risk manner, but it also, if they're done well, they can attract high-risk drinkers. And essentially, what they serve as is opportunity cost. Campuses and other communities that have tracked this well have demonstrated that students who attend these kinds of events tend to drink less on those nights, there's lower rates of vandalism and violence, other kinds of violations as well. So, I would strongly encourage WVU and others who might be able to put resources towards that to really think about that and consider those. And in fact, in the program that my company administers, Alcohol E.D.U., which is given to all incoming freshmen, we asked students explicitly, would you be interested in the following? And we asked them about a list of generic alcohol-free events and activities. 1,500 students this year said they would be up for going to attend movie nights or 1,400 saying, "Live music, yes, sign me up." 1,250 said that they wanted to attend Pilates classes and other kinds of sort of fitness classes. We asked also students, would you be interested in planning these events? Student involvement is critical to the success of these events being put together and put together well. 565 students from this year's first-year class said that they would be interested in helping to plan those events. So, this is a great opportunity, and this is just one aspect of, I think, you know, a slice of the pie, a slice of, a piece of the puzzle here. So, I just want to sort of contribute my little input there onto just endorsing that idea.
That's excellent. And we're actually, you know, we've covered so much ground tonight, and believe it or not, we're almost, we're coming to the end right now. And a good town hall is always a town hall where there's more to talk about than what we have available time. But I can say that we're having a reception afterwards, aren't we? And so, we're going to have some opportunity for informal conversation and interaction. But we do have a couple of minutes left, and I do want to get in a couple more comments and from you, please. Will you introduce yourself to us real quick?
I will. My name is Suzie Mullins, and I work in Charleston for a company called First Choice. You're probably most familiar with us through the Problem Gambler Help Program, and we also have the Prescription Drug Abuse Help Program. My program is a SAMSA-funded grant, and we provide support for people in recovery using technology. And one of the, you have a lot of good stuff going on in Morgantown, and I had the privilege yesterday and this morning of spending some time with some folks downtown at the Morgantown Sober Living Home. And you all have a spectacular resource. I can't think of a more beautiful building for somebody to stay sober in, a more beautiful home for somebody to live in while they're getting their life back together. And you might see a few of us here with these shirts. We had an event here last evening, and so, our slogan is "God Hope, Get Recovery." And that's important because recovery is a tertiary prevention method. So, you know, getting the students who are in recovery, getting the students who are coming to college in what the film referred to as a sobriety-hostile environment is really important. And in the survey that was done, WVU added a question about being in recovery. And of the incoming freshmen that took the survey, there were 91, is that right, who responded that they were in recovery. But we haven't gotten those 91 students together yet to help with some of these efforts. So, one of the things that I'd really like to see is this student recovery initiative and making it okay, making it a new social norm, making it acceptable for students who are in recovery to be, you know, to turn out, to wear these shirts. So, I have some shirts here, and I'll be available if anybody would like to have a shirt and help us start sending the message in a very subtle way that it's okay to be in recovery and be at WVU. I would like to see Morgantown and WVU be known as the number-one recovery school. And I'm going to ask Kathy to speak to a couple of things in terms of things that are going on with that recovery school initiative. But a couple of things, addiction is a disease of young people, and the longer we can delay that use, the less likely they are to become addicted. But that 18 to 25-year-old range is so vitally important. And in terms of the university, you know, retention rates, we know, and I worked as a counselor on a small campus, you know, we could look at almost every student who dropped out and trace it back to high-risk behaviors, whether that was alcohol or drugs. So, I just, I'm thrilled to be here and really glad to hear everybody's input and thank you all for everything that you're doing. Keep it up. And I will tell you about another secret. WVU is a member of an organization called the WVCIA, and that stands for West Virginia Collegiate Initiative to Address High-Risk Alcohol Use.
Excellent.
Which is a mouthful. And that's Ms. Peggy Runyon, who was formerly on the WVU police force, is part of that. Missy is part of that. Colleen has been with us. So, there are lots of good things going on. Of course, Gig, I wasn't going to leave you out. Gig has been, you know, and provides tips training around the state for those on-premise, off-premise trainings to do prevention with servers. So, there are a lot of resources, a lot of positive... a lot of positive things that can be tapped into. So, thank you very much.
Well, I really appreciate your comments, because the importance of it is, is that, again, you helped bring us back home, that this is a social-cultural issue that occurs over life stages. College is one part of that life stage, isn't it? It's a very crucial life stage. It's a life stage to address and to prevent, to educate, to put things in perspective and proportion. Your comment that people come into college in a state of recovery is crucial, because it drives home these very, very important points. You know, where do we go from here? Well, there's a couple of things. One, I want everyone to recognize that this conversation tonight is part of a larger conversation that's taking place across the United States. And so, the federal funding that helped to underwrite this is also an indication, a national conversation, a national discussion is taking place. I know that Kathy and Colleen, will both of you stand up, please? Kathy? Colleen? These two are real leaders here on campus, and so, I really want to recognize that. And their efforts are instrumental. And I mean, leadership is shared, and these two folks, because I know them so well, will tell you that a lot of people helped them out. But you guys are really the point of the effort. And I'm really putting you on the spot, because moving forward, you're also going to be sort of the point people as we start to continue this conversation. And so, I know that one of the things, one of the immediate action step that's planned is essentially a white paper or a report of some of this conversation that we've had tonight. And think about the ground that we've already touched. It's been a very rich discussion. And that ground that we've touched has been to situate this nationally, at the state level, and with our own community. And it's also to recognize the different tools that we have out there to start to address this, and that some of these tools are tools that we're already using. They're best practices. We don't want our best practices to be rare practices. We want those best practices to become part of our regular toolkit, don't we? We can learn from others, but I think Morgantown and West Virginia University is also in a very good position to teach others. So, let's carry on this conversation in a more informal manner. We'll go ahead and wrap things up right now. There's a hashtag somewhere, right? What's the hashtag? Colleen, help me?
WVU Town Hall Meeting.
WVU Town Hall Meeting. I can even get that, all right? So, let's continue the conversation there, but also let's consider the, continue the conversation out in the lobby. We're going to have a reception. But I also want to take a special moment to thank Chief Roberts, Helen Stubbs, Gig Robinson, Dr. Whitman, Mayor Celine, and Evan for taking their time to be with us tonight. And I want to thank all of you for taking the time out of a very busy schedule. I can't believe how many events are organized right now and all the schoolwork that has to be done. These are busy times, but busy times are fun times. And just think, it's not snowing. And I couldn't have said that yesterday. So, thank you all very much, and let's retire to the lobby. Thank you.